...of the Rockland County Planning Commission to order. Our rule call, and I'll begin by acknowledging that Ms. Smith is personnel. I guess all reasons not able to join us in person tonight, but she is participating. And I believe our call is to approve that participation. So I would entertain a motion to approve Ms. Smith's participation.
I second.
Second. All in favor? Thank you. And just to acknowledge, we have Mr. Shulman, Ms. Ritter, Mr. Atkins, Mr. Henry, and Ms. Soff, Garrett White. So we do have a physical quorum. And with that, I would ask that we all stand at the ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution which stands, "One nation, united in the common good."
Mrs. Smith, her location tonight is at her house in Sperryville.
Okay, thank you for that. And can you hear us okay, Ms. Smith?
Yes, I can hear everything around me very well.
All right, with that, I guess the next item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. Of one note, I don't believe we have minutes available this evening to review, so we'll scratch that item.
I might have a point along of order, which is, I think that the, these issues were tabled as opposed to continued. And I think from, not to be too sticky on this, but I think you have to reissue a notice about a public hearing after the item has been tabled rather than continued. But just about put it by that.
So...
We're not having another public hearing.
Yeah, I believe we closed the public hearing at our last meeting, and we continued our consideration of your application. If that, I think that...
That would make it old business.
Oh, I see, yes, good point. It is listed under public hearing, so a fair point. I didn't notice that. So why don't we make that suggest that that change to, to the agenda and just designate the consideration items two and three currently under public hearing to old business. That's a good point. Sorry, I hadn't noticed that. And I'm thinking also that, given that those items have engaged in some conversation in the past, that let's do that after the public hearing session. So with those changes, unless there are others, we entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I second.
Second.
I second.
All in favor? All right, thank you very much. So that brings us to the first item, our public hearing on special use permit 22-07-05, the Lawson tourist home. Just a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lawson has a property located at 823 Scranton Road in Castleton. It's 14 acres in size and is owned agricultural. He's wishing to operate a tourist home and to use his three-bedroom home as an Airbnb or tourist home when he's visiting family out of state. His next-door neighbor is his daughter, and she also has a special use permit for a tourist home as well for that property. The health department, there was some issues with that, but after the owner hired and provided an evaluation from a septic operator, they indicated that, you know, it appeared to be installed similar, similar to the 1990 permit that they had on file. And actually, it was installed at a larger size. They were okay with, with that and DOD had no objections. And the applicant is present.
Great, thank you. Did the applicant like to say anything about clarifying anything or correcting anything in the application? Or otherwise, that's fine, you know, if you need to, we'll turn to you with questions if that's all right.
No, that application is...
Speaks for itself.
Yes.
Thank you. Since this is a public hearing, sorry, I'm still in my sea legs here, then I think what I will do is open the public hearing for, hearing from the public on this application. Again, I will note that we will have a general public comment later, so this is your opportunity to speak specifically on the Lawson application. If you would like to speak now or in the future one, in future comments session, please come to the mic, state your name and district or address, and try to keep your comments to compliments. Anyone like to speak on this application? Hearing done, I will close the public, public hearing on that application. And this is in my district, and I will say that I am familiar with the property. I drove by there actually today to remind myself. I wondered, was this property operated as a bed and breakfast in the past when the kivvuses opened? No?
Before my time.
Before your time.
I bought it from David Mack and Jim. It was a yellow house that had, I think it was most known for all the dogs it had.
Well, the kivvuses who had previously had the Gay Street in, well, anyway, no, no, no matter. I do believe that this property may have been operated as a bed and breakfast back in the, in the late 90s or 2000s time frame, but that's neither here nor there. You know, I do think the property is suitable and with the presence of the, you know, the fact that it will continue to be a primary residence used when the applicant is not here and with family. I presume that your daughter or other owner would be your kind of local manager when you're not here to have the property.
They reside now primarily in Washington. They moved out here full-time. I followed suit, and then shortly thereafter, they had to, my daughter had to go back to work full-time in her office. So they're, she, they're now primarily in Washington and out here on the weekends. But I have neighbors that are sort of, that surround me.
Okay.
You will be the primary... I will be the primary.
The primary, yeah, proprietor of the property. And it looks like from the application that the neighbors were duly notified.
Yes, sir.
Was there any issue about that?
No.
Any comments or questions?
No, my only question is if, if there's somebody in the building in running and there's a problem and you're not there and your daughter's not there, have you, is there somebody specifically that you've spoken with that a Airbnb client could call?
I have not yet, but I could. Frankly, it's kind of waiting on to get past before I get ahead of myself, if you, if you would. But as indicated, it's my primary residence.
I know.
It's my home. And so I care very deeply about who's in my home when I'm not there and what happens to my home when I'm not there, because predominantly, it's my home. So, yes, I would want someone out here and, you know, could arrange for that when I'm not here so they can have... Terry Dixon across the street has been, you know, wonderful in being of assistance. He was real estate agent for both me and my daughter in our separate transactions, and he's been excellent in trying to help get this done, so I'm ahead of myself. But I would speak to some, to him or someone else about being on call. I think he's on call for my daughter when they're not here, but again, that home, I don't want to be held to that. I think that's correct, but I'm not, I'm...
Mr. Shulman, any questions for the applicant?
No, sir.
Is that it? Is it him?
No.
All right. There are no other questions for the applicant. I would entertain a motion to either pass this on to the Lord Presuming Appeals with the recommendation of approval or denial or some other action. Since there seems to be some hesitation, I would make a motion that we move this application on to the BZA with recommendation of approval.
I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Thank you very much. Your next stop is the Lord Presuming Appeals. Or Henry, if you can...
I'll be in touch.
Great, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Moving on to old business, the next item on the agenda is special use permit 22-07-03, the Harmony Manor Bed and Breakfast LLC application that was discussed within the hearing at our last meeting and continued discussion, and we tabled the application for, so we can get some further information about the, about the vote. Ms. Summers, I believe you updated your staff report on this application. Would you like to give us a summary of developments since our last conversation?
Sure. Instead of plans were submitted together with a land use, land disturbance permit application, the plans were sent out, were, were sent to the county's contract at time review agency, couple of personal water. Preliminary review by the county staff indicates that the submitted documents do not include all required information needed to issue a land disturbance permit. The plans also do not clearly convey the intent of the project. I attached copies, photocopies of those plans, and according to the plans, they do not, the roadwork does not extend all the way to Route 211.
And before we open this up, I, I believe there was some, some discussion at our last meeting that was clarified thereafter with respect to applicable roads standards.
So type one road standard is required.
Yes, and that's because of the additional use for the development road, not because of the explicit requirement in the bed and breakfast portion of, yes, bed and breakfast portion of the regulation. I think that was the...
Correct.
The cause of the confusion. And thank you for those who kind of clarified that. I believe the applicant is here.
Uh huh.
Mr. Henderson, or did you, do you have anything to add with respect to the application?
First of all, the roadwork that we're doing is going to occur, let me start over here. The roadwork we're doing is going to occur regardless of whether this is an approved application or not. So let's assume for a moment that this, that there's some bearing here between the two, which I believe that there is not for a couple of reasons. First one is, and most importantly, this is not a rezoning. This is a special use or a change in the use, not a rezoning, which I think is an important distinction here. It is not a rezoning. And zoning is articulated in the state code in a number of ways, particularly under their zoning, under their definitions and their, they talk about variances and special exceptions, and this is a variance. It is not a rezoning. That being the case, then I believe that paragraph 170-11, effect on previous approvals in the Rappahannock Code, reads as follows. "The complete plan submitted is required in chapter 147, which is the zoning chapter. Subdivision of land of Dakota Rappahannock County requires that the effective date of this chapter shall be judged on the zoning ordinance in effect on the date that that plan was submitted," which I believe was 1975. I'm trying to confirm that now. So the amendments to the zoning ordinance were, would be appropriate if we were moving, for example, to move from one house for 25 acres to 25 houses on 25 acres. Then the zoning, that would be a new subdivision requirement, and then that would change. And I think a summary point would be appropriate. Here, this is merely a special use application, and those two first paragraphs do not apply. That entrance to Route 211 was approved by the highway authority and was approved by the county at the time, and that subdivision. And that subdivision plaque is the one that prevails. There are also several items in the code of Virginia that talks about vesting of the rights that we have. This is merely a special use application. It is not a rezoning, and that's where we draw the distinction here. If it were a rezoning, I would agree 100 percent.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Anybody have any questions for the applicant while he's got the floor? I guess I have just one, going back to our past conversation about the, I know most of us live upon the road, but I wanted to clarify something because we talked about the frisbee golf course a bit in our last conversation, and I believe you mentioned that that was not part of the application, and it occurred to me to wonder if your bed and breakfast guests have access to using that.
They would, yes, they would. Yes.
So then how is that not part of bed and breakfast?
Because it's a disc golf course, and the main entry point for that is over on Christmas tree land.
And you wouldn't be advertising the mini golf course as part of the Airbnb?
No, absolutely not.
All right, well, I think that's another topic. I think we're primarily focused on the road, but I, I wanted to clarify that with you based on the last conversation. Thank you. I believe, please be available if you may. Doesn't feel like we've moved very far from the last conversation about this application. I guess, Ms. Summers, with respect to the, I guess I'm not 100 percent clear what is tripping. Is, is the, is the sport foot separation and the entrance tied to the type one standards? Or is that an independent issue with respect to the application? I mean, what, what extent are these things dependent on one another? I think is one, is one question that I'd grab from the moment that I remember.
So the doc recommendation, or one of the comments that I offered, was to consider relocating the, the entrance with the co-op, because that's a shared entrance or eliminated. I believe that's part of their standards.
Any other commissioners have any questions for the applicant or, or thoughts on this application?
I just have a comment as reference to this entrance. It refers to the, was approved by VDOT back in 1975 supposedly. That whole, this whole situation has totally changed since 1975. Totally changed. You will now operate somewhat of a commercial operation. So you do need to get a VDOT permit. So I, that's, that's, that's a definite. What took place in 1975 has totally changed after, after that. Totally changed. So you would have to go back to VDOT to get an approved access.
Well, certainly our consideration of a non-by-right use would certainly, it would seem to me, allow for consideration of the conformity of the, of the property with the current standards. It would be one thing if the bed and breakfast had been operating since 1970. And again, you know, I don't, I don't want to pretend to be our own legal counsel on this matter, but it seems to me that what we are looking at is the consideration of a, a special use and whether it's legally binding that it meets those standards or not. It certainly seems within our authority to consider conformity with current zoning standards in our assessment of whether it fits with the use of the property. So I would rather we not try to take this on as a legal matter, as a planning body, but consider it in, in, in that fashion. Those are my thoughts at least. Others?
My only thought is that at least when I drove up there today, I mean, I know there are stakes, but it's basically the same road that was moved during first hearing, and so the concerns that existed at that time, I think, still exist. You've got the problem with the emergency vehicles, you have the problem with the entrance. I mean, the road is not very well maintained. So I just can't see issuing a pardon.
Thank you. Mr. Shulman, any remarks or questions for the applicant?
No, I tend to agree with Ms. Ritter on this. I think it should take some cooperation with the co-op or to address this, that entrance. It's just two now.
January, you can...
So let's clarify two things here. Number one, the entrance... Can you speak up a little bit? Yeah. The entrance that is on the submission does not meet the requirements in our ordinance, correct?
Correct.
And number two, there's been no change in the last 30 days to that part of the submission.
Correct.
Number three, the portion of the road that comes between the co-op and the neighbors, we mentioned the Jenkins property, that section of the road there, that's not going to be repaired or rebuilt up to type one?
No. It doesn't, it did not show that on the plans, nor did the plans label or indicate what type of road it was going to be.
So that was eliminated from the submission. It was not part of the submission.
Correct.
And I think, if my understanding, that the entire road has to be type one standards, as does the entrance type one.
Correct.
So I think either one of those are kill points for the application.
Sorry, Ms. Smith, I, I guess I might have, might have skipped you, depending on whether I consider the computer or the microphone as your position in the lineup. Do you have any questions or comments about this application?
No, I, I just want to say I agree with what I've been hearing, and I, I, I agree that the entrance and the road conditions seem to be insignificant and not addressed with any of the materials we received from the last meeting.
All right. Well, then, it sounds like we're kind of coalescing around a position, but would anyone like to present a motion?
Yeah, I would make a recommendation that we deny this request. Based upon, we have not gotten the sufficient information that we have requested, and there has nothing been, there has nothing been done to the existing road. There are no shovels in the ground, so to speak. So I, that's my recommendation.
I second. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Start.
Should we define that as more that the application did not address the standards of the entrance and did not adjust the bringing a portion of the road up to standards that was, that was not part of the submission?
Yeah.
Would be more precise.
Yeah, I guess I'll let Mr. Atkins motion, but...
I mean, I think he has a, I think somebody has a right to start work after approval. I don't think he needed to start work.
Good point.
Prior to the day, for the BZA.
So it would be fair to modify the motion to say that the, the road does not meet the applicable standards?
Road and entrance.
Road and entrance. So your motion would be to recommend denial on the basis that the road and the planned improvements to the road do not meet the applicable standards?
I can go along with that, yes.
Ms. Ritter?
Yeah.
Still second that. Does that satisfy you? Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for that. The next item on the agenda is special use permit 22-07-04, white children group. It's like we have some late-breaking information on that road situation. Ms. Summers, would you like to elaborate, please?
Yeah, like this evening, we did get a note from Henchy Avane regarding the observations of the road, specifically Putnam and Kindraw. In their conclusion, they, they looked at things like the travelway, the shoulders, the crown, the slopes, the ditches. And in their conclusion, they found that, that those roads generally comply with the type two road standards. And this is what the planning commission have requested of the applicant, and the applicant is in attendance as well. If you, you all like to hear from him.
Thank you, and thank you to the applicant. Mr. Atkins, I believe this is in, is this in your district? Do you have any further questions or comments for the applicant?
Just thank you for getting me to the floor.
Yeah, and I'm...
Not easy, Harry.
I don't really have any questions for the applicant. I still have some concerns with the road. I've driven the road, and there are places on that road going in and out that you cannot take. You have to back up or somebody has to move on. So I know the pictures and all, and the medicine show, but I don't think that those are taken in some of the locations that is actually out there. And then I still have a concern with the tourist home being in this area, or being close, you're within 300 and 400 feet of other families. And that's primarily a family subdivision. I know there's one other in there. I have a question if that was incorrect, approved when that was approved, being there.
There's actually two other tourist homes approved in that subdivision.
Yeah.
The first two of them, I guess I have questions, I have concerns if the other two was correctly addressed. Well, nothing against the act. You've done your, you've done your job and, and, you know, applied everything, and you've provided everything that we've asked. But I just have a real concern with tourist homes being in close proximity of public family residence. That's my concern.
And I think that's perfectly reasonable concern. I think the question may be more addressed by consideration of what our requirements are, because it's a little hard to, I mean, I'm not sure how we tie that to something. It appears, based on what the applicant has provided, that, you know, they've given us some evidence that the road meets the type two standards, which is what our ordinance currently requires. I guess there could be an argument also about, you know, some of the general standards with respect to the impact on neighbors and noise, et cetera. I think those get a little bit harder to pin down in terms of arguments for.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Smith.
When the other two tourist homes were approved, there was not a provision in our ordinance for the type two road standards.
Good point.
And the last one that was approved was in two, it was approved in 2020. And actually, at the planning commission and the BZA, there was no speakers that were raising any concerns. I did just, for reference, that back of the wall.
And as far as the operating, we have some operating.
Your point is with, if we had such speakers.
Kind of making a note, actually, one of them has changed their mind, the neighbor to the side of us. We had our board meeting the other day, and actually, one board now spoke to her, and she said that she's reconsidered her position. She thinks, you know, that we'd be good running it, she understands what we're trying to do, and doesn't think it's going to be a disturbance. So that's what she had told me.
Any other comments, discussion from the commission?
Well, I think, you know, the major point, I think, is that even with a tourist home, there's no greater use than it would be for the owners to use it. So it's not an increased burden.
But I'm not saying that, I don't, I'm not saying it's an increased burden. You have a regular home over there, you get to know that name, you know who that person is, you know, you know that person. People that are coming in and out constantly, you don't necessarily get to know them, so you don't know who the clientele is. They may be perfect people. I can judge, they don't want to judge. Don't want to be, we were not put on the subject of that, but that's just my concern.
And I understand that that concern has been raised by others, you know, in this forum, so it's.
I guess.
No, no, I don't think it didn't, I thought you were saying.
I look at it like, if I was living in that neighborhood, and I was raising my children, as long as you were in that house, you were renting there. I mean, you're the owner, I could get to know you, and it would be perfectly okay. But when you've got people coming and going, it's, I would have, I just have a concern. Being, you know, I have a concern for the families that are already there, that are raising their children. Maybe nothing, nothing ever goes wrong, okay? But we can't guarantee that.
Are you finished with the summary? Or anyone else?
Is there a question? The one we just talked about, how many matters, you went from type one to a type two road there, based upon the number of residents on that road. With this tourist home, we don't have that division where, because there's multiple residents on this road, does this go then from a type one to type two, or does it, as a tourist home stays at type one?
As the tourist home stays at type two.
Red and breakfast goes to type two, clearly.
Type one.
To type one. This doesn't go to type one if it's multiple residents on the road. But for clarity's sake, if he was doing the bed breakfast, then it would require him to type one. Okay. What's the zoning there? Is it R2?
It's residential rule.
How big is your parcel?
Yeah, it's all about.
How big is your parcel? I just underpaid it.
1600 square, 16,000 square feet, sorry.
And you got the second one beside it, right?
Well, again, I would entertain a motion on this, and then, Mr. Atkins, this is in your district. Oh, I'm sorry, Al, did I, Ms. Smith, did you have something you wanted to bring up?
No, I mean, I do think it's important to recognize the concerns of that neighborhood, and these are small lots, and it's challenging to introduce another rental, a short-term rental in that environment. And I know it seems like one maybe got through without, a lot of people knowing about it from what we learned at the last meeting. And I just wonder, in these instances where, you know, very small lots, and people coming and going, and a lot of amenities in the, in the complex that the renters will be using for their stays, if it might not be appropriate to attach a renewal date to the application or recommendation to the BZA, maybe I'd recommend it, do you renew your two years so that all the neighbors and the owner can, you know, know that in two years, they'll be reconsidering how it's reserved.
Thank you for that.
You know, we had talked about, there's been discussion before, that to take these tourist homes out of the consideration by the planning commission and the BZA, and just basically make it an administrative checklist by the zoning administrator. So you have a lot here where basically all the blanks have been checked, and we have a detailed road analysis of civil engineer that basically says that the road width is in compliance, and there might be some ditch issues here and there, but there's no water in the road, and I think this is far more detailed than what we've ever received on other projects. And these lots are basically created and grandfathered before there was a zone, and it's in Rappahannock County. So I think it's a situation here where you had two neighbors come out, voiced concerns last month, and you have one that maybe is okay with it now, but nobody else came. So, you know, this seems to, we put, ask him to do more detail here on this road than we'd ever ask anybody else to, and the issue with the well and septic are okay. So I think we have to treat this like any other application we treated, and all the blocks are checked here. So I think it's a situation where it needs to be approved.
I would say, if it's, we can think about conditions, and we should look at the general standards, but I do tend to agree that most of these concerns would best be addressed by revisiting the requirements of our ordinance. We can't, we can't apply standards that we haven't adopted, even though we weren't maybe anticipating lots of this size in this proximity. I mean, our current ordinance doesn't have a lot size minimum for this type of property or setback or requirements for some of the things that one might expect to see, to deal with the questions before us. So that's where I struggle. If we, if we were inclined to want to recommend something other than approval, it seems to me we would have to make the case on the basis of something in the general standards. And I haven't really, I haven't heard anything really articulated in those terms that.
I think that's something that we definitely need to address, or have the board needs to address, because there is a difference between these properties and this subdivision and the properties in Chester Gap and that subdivision. Those are neighborhoods.
You mean that they're similar?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, briefly, there are plenty of fine properties in Chester Gap that make excellent tourist homes, because they're at the end of the lane, they've got access to the National Park, they're on a corner, and it don't affect a lot of people. But then some are, you know, house after house after house, and house, and house, and tourist house, 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 house. That's a little odd. But I think maybe that's something we need to address additional conditions for these subdivisions.
Well, I think that would also.
But I don't think it's anything we can do now.
Sure, I agree. I think that kind of consideration would also help to look at this question of whether tourist homes are potentially crowding out affordable housing in some way. I mean, I think that's another factor on that, but I don't know.
You know, I think this is still United States of America, and I think people have a right to do with their properties, or what's legally permissible, and whether they rent it, if there's provisions for them to rent it by night or a week, then they should be allowed to do that. You know, this concern that we're crowding out affordable housing, you know, that issue goes far beyond of the, a tourist home. It goes far beyond, we have the zoning ordinance that limits, very much limits, the land that can be used for affordable housing, it doesn't encourage, there's limited water, there's a pile of other reasons that affect affordable housing. It's not a tourist home being rented. And that's a scapegoat for that topic, so.
You're certain?
And if you look, another thing here, too, if you look at areas, if you go to urban areas, they have Airbnbs right next door to each other. I'm doing one in Newmarket, it's right next door to a residential house. Look at the Outer Banks, all the houses, I mean, you've got some full-time residents, and they have schools and everything. But there's a whole new community coming in there every week, and they deal with issues like this. And I think it is some reason to, on a property where it has recreational facilities, burn pits and things like this, fire pits, where, you know, it could affect the neighbors, but, you know, it's other communities where the houses are small, the lots are small, and basically, somebody's going to go there and sit on a deck and drink a bottle of wine and go out to eat someplace. You know, I think there's different impacts here.
Well, thank you for that.
I agree with that, Al, but also, I'd come back and say, this is Rappahannock. We don't want to be out of that. We don't necessarily want to be in Newmarket. People that have been born and raised in Rappahannock County want Rappahannock to stay peaceful, quiet, and not a whole lot of houses in it. And that's the reason that most of the people that comes to Rappahannock, that's what they're looking for. If you want them, they want to come here, come out. That's the reason that most of the people that comes to our beautiful county to live here.
Most of us want to close the door after we get here.
Right. And it's nothing wrong with that, but, you know, I guess I'm old school, I'm an old Navy, but I can, and I really like to see the county stay as much quiet, tranquil, like it was.
Okay, well, I don't think we're going to resolve the broader question of our standards tonight, so I do have respect for the applicant and the application. I do think we need to, we do need to act on this, and for that end, I would entertain a motion.
I moved it. We approve the application, we move it forward to the BZA, and include the staff recommendations.
That would be a recommendation of approvals? Is there a second?
I'm second. Can the staff conditions over three listed here?
Maps of two people, no food service offered, and permanent term rates on sale, transfer to property.
Two people or four people?
That says two.
Two.
It's a very small, it's a, it's a very small house.
That's what this said.
Can I pull my notes from last week?
Yeah, I think that changed.
I think I corrected it must definitely.
I think right, did you change?
This is your fact report.
Which is the corrected?
I just pulled it from last week, or last month.
That's it, yeah. I corrected it from last month.
Okay, so the corrected number is two.
Corrected number, thank you.
Which again, would certainly be, there's a limit to there. Okay, well, we have a motion that would be made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Well, I kind of agree with the idea of putting it out there for two years, and I don't think it's fair to the applicant, because it wasn't done to the others there before. I don't think that we should, we shouldn't come in, change our standards, and deny it two years later. So I don't, I don't like that. But I do, because it's, he is going to be an absentee owner, I want to dark-skinned providing provisions.
So you're, you would, you're requesting modifications to be.
Any outdoor lighting?
Any outdoor lighting be compatible with the dark sky standards?
Yes, sir.
I guess that would be a request to the mover of the motion to.
Yes, I'd be happy to amend that.
And I, can you second? And you still second? Okay, I think we're in good shape there. I think we should probably do a roll call vote on this one. Maybe I'll, if you don't mind, Ms. Smith, I'll start with you on the phone.
Aye.
Mr. Henry? I have two will vote aye. Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. Well, I'm sorry we couldn't be unanimous, but I think that is the process we're under, and thank you all for your thoughtful consideration. Moving on then, the next item on the agenda is an open public comment period. And again, I would ask you to be respectful on your comments. Please identify yourself and your district if you have anything to say. Here by open public comment period, is there anyone who would like to speak?
My name is Yoko Barsky in the Hunter District. Tonight seems like a lot of talks are on the road, and another thing is coming up on this, the one that we'll be talking about, the access road to gatherings. And I was just reading this, and thinking, you know, most of Rappahannock County roads are narrower, and it's been doing fine so far. And most people have had some kind of lodging that's attracted more than 10 cars, or maybe even 20 cars. I would say weekend, but every once in a while, every once in five, 10 years, I think just about anybody has had that. So it would be kind of nice to separate those private parties or gatherings from commercial ones, such as wineries or some of, and some wineries also are nice to go through this country roads to reach the actual winery, but somewhere wide enough or turned up or something, so you don't have to widen the entire road. There must be some other way to write this up. There must be some other way to, uh, write this up to fit the Rapid County mine things. So I, I'd like you to consider that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah, Ron Mack from Jack, Jackson District. Going back to the short-term rentals and affordable housing. Because originally on this issue, I was sort of in the affordable housing camp. But thinking it out, the houses that we are, are being, you know, asked to be short-term rentals or whatever are second homes for people.
Yeah.
And so they're not here all the time. And, and they have every right to, to rent it out. Whereas if they were required, they can only rent it out as a long-term rental. That prevents them from using it at their pleasure for a second home. So I think we sort of have to, you know, put that issue to rest in that they are viable. And we're a tourist area. They do bring people in here that go to our restaurants, buy things in our shops and everything. Promoting the local economy. And, and I think, like I said, we just need to get around that. And, and they're gonna happen. And yes, we have to leave each one individually, but, uh, they're, they're viable. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Would anyone else like to speak? Go ahead.
My name's Joff Nash from Hampton District. I brought my wife who, who listens for me. She doesn't speak for me, but she listens for me. But I haven't had the chance to talk to her. I wonder, you know, what was decided tonight as far as the entranceway? Michelle and Yoko and I have had these discussions about, uh, yeah. We already know there was a vote for a five-bedroom B&amp;B on Clark Lane. But I think at the time, the Department of Transportation said, any more intensive use than that would require a whole different type of entrance. I'm not sure if it's type one or type two, type three, type four. But it would require a whole new entrance, which would be quite expensive. I'm not sure where Carl and Donna Henderson left that or, or whether they're going to say, we're not gonna do agritourism. We're just gonna do a five-bedroom B&amp;B. Or we're only gonna do agritourism, but no B&amp;B. I'm not sure where it was left this evening for us who are hard to hear. Someone could maybe explain that to me. That's all.
Sure. In brief, we voted unanimously to recommend denial of the permit.
You're one of the ones I couldn't hear.
Is that better? Was that better?
Yeah, that's better, thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
Diane Bruce in Sperryville. I have a question first. What's the difference in type one and type two road simply? Without going into all the...
Type one is, contrary to some of the discussion in our last meeting, is a more highly engineered, uh, you know, wider, uh...
V dot standard.
V dot standard road. Type two is a, you know, is gravel. It's got some road crown and ditch requirements, but it's less, less highly engineered than type one.
Just more rural, rustic-like.
So type one does not have to be paved, though?
No.
And, and so does type one have to be fifty-foot right-of-way? No.
I don't think it's tied to the right-of-way. It's a construction standard for the actual road, you know, travelway itself.
I thought I, I thought I understood that if there were more than five columns of, because on the road, uh, it has to be fifty, has to be a fifty-foot right-of-way?
It's supposed to.
Is that correct?
Well, if we were approving a five parcel subdivision, I think you're taking us into an area that we are not doing. What we are looking at is, in light of a, an altered use within an area that would, under today's standards, have required that. I think it, we, I, I, it's still a little unclear to me whether we're on solid legal ground with type one or type two. So I don't think the road meets either, frankly. So I guess if we, I don't think we're in the same situation with any of these tourist homes than we would be if we were, if the question before us was whether to approve the five, part of the five-lot subdivision or not. And that's why I don't think we're, we're not as deep into that space, because it's not directly applicable to the applications before us.
I think that the new construction, new building does require fifty-foot right-of-way. Because I had to do it on Woodbrook Road. I know that they took twenty-five-foot of right-of-way from me. And then so whoever's on the other side would have to, they would have to get twenty. And one forward new is definitely is fifty-foot right-of-way.
But it already, since some of these homes already existed, you can't authorize this.
It's not...
We, you know, Mr., Mr. White, uh, we, we have an application. We, uh, discussed that, voted on that. I think it's fine to have questions, but I don't think we should have questions about specific properties.
Yeah.
No, you know, that's bad, bad precedent. It's, it's bad. So if you just wanna talk about the ordinance, what it means, that's fine, but let's not talk properties.
Okay. Well, are you, do you have further questions or comments?
I have a current comment, yes.
Please.
I'm thinking about the Harmony Manor one that you, I thought it was gonna be a public hearing tonight, and of course it wasn't. I've been familiar with that property for a very long time. And I remember when that house was built by a man named Gary Harvey. I'm sure you all know this, but I want to get it off of my neck. He was told that, uh, he, he wanted to have it as a living. And he was told that that house could never be used for any commercial use. It'd have to just be a private home. And he violated that. And the board of supervisors subpoenaed him, brought him in and told him he could never do that. He did that twice. He violated it, brought it back in a second time. He violated it. And he was told, never can this property be anything but home. So he sold it. And unfortunately, somebody bought it and applied for a two-bedroom, um, B&amp;B, I guess. And, um, got it.
Mrs. Bruce? Everything you're saying is in our staff report. There's pages and pages of, of things that went on. So, um, your comments would be really good next month if you have comments at the BCA. But that's beyond old business. Now, this is concluded business.
Okay, and, and I am before the Planning Commission, am I not?
Yeah, you are, dear.
And you've all planned for the county. Is that correct? And I'm thinking about future planning with these comments. So what we saw was something go from no, no, no to, well, okay, you guy, he probably didn't know that. Let's give him two bedrooms. And then apparently, there was another application. I don't know if it passed or failed. But we get down to this one, where he now wants five rooms, five, uh, tourist rooms. And I, I think what I'm really talking about is planning. I would like to see all of our governing bodies be careful about when something starts, and then it grows, and then it grows, and then it grows. And oftentimes, it's like, oh gee, poor difficult man. He didn't know that. So let's, let's give him what he wants. And we're seeing this happening in various places throughout the county. So mostly what I wanted to say is I didn't understand about the type one and type two. That's my question.
Yeah.
But mostly what I wanted to say to the Planning Commission is, as these things come up and you have a, you have an activity and they want to enlarge it, I hope you will think ahead. Because as Ms. Jenkins has just said, we're here because we like the smaller population. We like fewer homes. And I too, and maybe because the county, as you know, I don't have, I know things change, but I'd like to see the Planning Commission think carefully about the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this one here? All right, now I'll close the public comment period. Thank you all very much. So we have no new business. I don't know if there are updates on any of the informational items. Maybe I'll turn to, um, Ms. Summers on that in a moment. But I did want to touch on, um, our work on draft sign ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
I know, uh, first I'd like to apologize. I had intentions of trying to schedule a work session before tonight to work on that, and it just didn't work out. But I have identified, um, and I would like to propose a, a work session to try to complete our work on, on the sign ordinance for either Monday, uh, November...
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth or Tuesday, November fifteenth, which is, which would be the Monday or Tuesday before our next regular meeting. So we would have those two meetings in that week. I guess I would like, I don't know, I think we have time. I can call meetings separately. But if anyone would, has a reason to object to one of those two meetings, otherwise be, be on notice that, and maybe you could get back to me. But I would be planning to, to call a, a, a work session at one of those two dates. Does that suffice? Any other updates on the information on that?
Yes, sir.
You know, the fourteenth would work better for me.
Fourteenth would be better? That's the Monday or the Tuesday?
Monday.
Yeah, that would actually work better for me as well. So, okay. So look for that.
An update I would have would be, is that we're trying, Gary and myself, we're trying to look at having a joint meeting with the board of supervisors, um, in November.
Yeah.
So.
That would be tough.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I, part of the reason that I'm looking at that week is I would be out of the area for just a couple weeks. So, um, that could be tough for me, but you know, afterward.
Yes.
Any other conversation, uh, issues? Anybody who wants to bring up any of these ongoing efforts? I believe the, uh, part of the reason we, we had some discussion about whether tonight would be a joint meeting on the, on the Berkeley group follow-up. But I believe that is still in the works. We'll need a next deliverable from them on their, on their duties. All right. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to the government.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.